Senator Vell, Senator Councilman Amy Goldwater, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from January the 17th meeting.
To move.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the minutes from January 27th meeting. Would the clerk please call?
Malott.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda will be approval of a statement of bills paid in the amount of $340,501.06.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the statement of bills in the amount of $340,501.06.
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid. Would the clerk please call?
Malott.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kay.
Next item on the agenda will be request or comments on the Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Check 5125 South 103rd Street. I have a question. Is how many of you up there are concerned about lowering the city taxes of the Edbridgeville? You can signify by yes.
The council is required, are instructed not to remark to your questions because this is not on the agenda.
Well, that brings up a point about bringing a county commissioner in here, or two, that you had a discussion about five or 10, for about five or 10 minutes last council meeting, just so we can question them. We can question the county commissioner in a public forum here if they showed up, but obviously not you folks. I just wanted to remind you all that in the 27 years I've lived in my home, my taxes have gone up, my evaluation's gone up 140%, yet my city taxes have gone up 193%. The county library, which I believe the mayor is still a member of the board, has gone up 522%. The schools have gone up 110%, so that extra money they got from the state must be working. The community college has gone up 335, and the UG has gone up 181. So, you guys are part of the problem by not caring about taking care of our taxes. You just want to spend our, spend the money continually. Because I kind of looked up what some of the local city taxes are from last year of some of the local cities in our area. Airways 121, DeSoto's 147, Be Door's 162, Lansing's 148, Tongonoxie's 149, Carter's 139. Yet, we're at the top of the pack, 182 mills. You guys aren't doing anything to lower that. And it'd be nice if they could answer, the citizens. I guess maybe you're afraid that maybe they might say something that you don't want them to say. However, this whole county, this city, just keeps spending our money. And you guys made the comment about the county commissioners not paying any attention or not, you're not getting the services from them that you think you deserve. What about me? What about my, what about the citizens in this, in this city? You don't seem to care what they say, because I don't think I'm getting the services I get back. My taxes just keep going up and up and up. So you guys are doing a good job doing that. Try something different. How about lowering some? How much time do I have?
None. None of that. There are no other. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Consider recommendation of approval of the planning commission regarding replat, final plat of 10900, 10820, 10750, Village South Parkway, and acceptance of dedicated public right of ways and easements. Kate.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This item is before you. To replat some property associated with the Village South development near 110th and Village South, Village South Parkway. On December 2nd, 2019, the property owner's agent filed an application for replat and final plat of approximately 14 acres of land located on the north side of Village South Parkway. The two parcels that are under the yellow shade there on your map have been previously platted, both preliminarily and final plats. So that portion is being replatted, and then the area that is outside of the two, or outside of the red lines, but inside of the black line, so this area here, has been added as a final plat to that property. So that's one of the changes that's being made as part of this process. Overall, the property is proposed to be replatted into two lots and three tracts. It is located in the C3 general commercial district, as well as the C2 commercial retail district. The utility providers were part of the review. We sent the materials off to them, as well as the UG, so that they could review for easements and make sure that everything was in order from the standpoint of them providing service. On January 15th, 2020, the planning commission held a public hearing in regard to the plat application. There were no comments made by the public during the public hearing. Staff supports the recommendation of the planning commission, which was for approval of the replat or final plat with the conditions included in the staff report. There were six conditions that are part of the staff report that were provided in your packet. Those conditions are primarily technical in nature, having to do with some of the language that was on the plats and things that we wanted to make sure were corrected. We do have one modification, and that's the condition number two, that was recommended by staff and recommended by the planning commission. And that is that the ownership of track B shall be assigned to lot 5 instead of lot 3. Part of this, the reasoning for it, I'll just kind of talk about it briefly. Lot 3 is the hotel site. Track A is the detention or retention area. Track B is an area that goes from about this line up into this area. Lot 5 is this area here. Given the financial arrangements that were made, track A is previously platted, was tied to lot 3. And for that reason, they can't change those land boundaries. So they've got the financial package that's tied those two together. And to change that boundary would cause problems for the financial arrangements. The planning commission and staff were not aware of that until after the planning commission meeting. So we're suggesting that modification to tie it to lot 5. Just to give you an idea, track B is primarily going to be an access road that comes up from Village South Parkway, wraps around the detention basin, and serves the backside of the hotel site. And then track C is actually a place where there's a billboard currently located today. So that's a separate ownership in the little triangle, track C, and it has applied access to that tracks. With that, I'll stand for questions.
I'm confused.
I tried to make it as easy as possible, but...
Between track and plats and all that, what's, what's the purpose of, and what are the advantages or disadvantages of this move for the city and for the landowner?
No real advantage or disadvantage per se. It doesn't change a whole lot, other than they're bringing lot 5 into being through this final plat, which was not previously final plat.
Lot 5 is...
Is a square area down here in the southeast corner, so it's going to be basically this area. Part of the, part of the discussion from them, you know, so the area that's in black outlined up there is under the TIF plan. All of that property is inside TIF plan area number two. And part of their reasoning, I'm not sure I understand all the behind the scene, was to tie all of the property into the TIF area into being platted property. I, I don't know what that does from a financial standpoint. The property only generates, I mean, it generates revenues either way. Potentially, if they were to sell those lots, so if they plat lot 5, lot 5 sells, it still will generate TIF revenues, and those TIF revenues are still obligated to the bonds. But it may be from some other owner. So if I didn't bought lot 5, I would also kind of have to take responsibility for lot B. And whatever taxes were due on that, that would get paid into the TIF, would still go to pay on the bond. So, other than potential, you could have potential different ownerships. I, I don't know that, it doesn't impact the TIF payments, obligations, et cetera, and so forth. All of that area today, all property taxes generated on that area is subject to the TIF district, as well as the CID district.
And the plot 5, plat 5, lot 5, whatever it is, has the easement for the road go back to the...
It'll actually have, the easement will go across, so lot 5 is here, the easement comes up along this east side of lot 5 onto track B, which is this kind of odd shaped piece right here. Would come up and wrap around on track A to serve lot 3. So it's another access route to the backside of the hotel.
So the easement on the north side of that track would...
Yes. Yeah. So the easement's going to come all the way up through here, come around the top there, and into lot 3. Part of the other side of that easement is not just serve the hotel, but there's currently an existing billboard up in this area that is, again, a smaller parcel, and they identify it as track C. It's under a separate ownership, so they also have to provide, provide an access easement into that for that ownership group to maintain. That easement technically exists already, so the access easement had to be put into place at the time that they platted the others, because they had to be able to, one, get to the billboard, and number two, the way they platted that around the detention pond. And part of the site plan for lot 3 shows that as an access point to the back of the hotel. So effectively, it's already, it's already by a description, so a deed filed at the courthouse already exists, that access. As is the number of easements. It probably makes, it's harder to see, but on the attachment, this is final plat, the Village South, and under the 2nd plat, it gives you, it's a little hard to read because of how small it is. It kind of shows you where that access road goes up through the lot.
The present developer owns clear to the red line on the far right, is that correct?
He owns all those lots, all those lots that you basically there. And all the lots, north and south, the Village South is owned by Compass Commodity 3.
Of where the general location map and all the numbers are, that is not part of his ownership?
No, no. I don't know, I don't know if the one lot immediately to the west now, it is not.
10750 is not?
10750 is, but the one to the east of that is not. It ends, it ends, so it ends where the roadway ends, right here, where this cul-de-sac ends, the right way ends here, so. That would be, so anything east of this red line is not under their ownership, as far as we know. And technically, the 10750 line shown here from a lot, it actually goes all the way down to River Drive. So these are parts, these are tax parcels that you see in the red lines, not necessarily platted lots.
So it's, this is just cleaning it out, basically. There's no positive or negative for the city? It's just cleaning it out?
Not that I'm aware of. There's no positive or negative. I don't know what the advantage may be to them as far as their financial arrangements, or any kind of sale of property, or anything like that that was not disclosed as part of the application, so.
Where is the footprint of the hotel on that?
Uh, footprint of the hotel's going to be roughly in this location, kind of right here. Do you well, ma'am? Yeah, that, that map, the underlines from the GIS, so it's got the old kind of ponds that used to be on that property that aren't there anymore. That's all been graded out. It's with the blue, kind of the light blue colors.
Is there going to be any other road going in besides that back access?
Eventually, as far as going south, or coming in here, it'll have access along here. So there'll be access points along Village South Parkway, and then that wraparound access to the back of the hotel. But they will not be public streets? Yeah. There'll also be an access point coming off onto this property too. I think this drive, actually, the entry was right in this area, so it's a shared access for this property and hotel.
See, that road is Village South Parkway.
Yeah. So that's, that's the public, Village South Parkway, that's the I-70, 110th interchange there, so. Now the, what is, what we keep referring to as lot 3 and probably, and track A, there is already a final site plan, obviously, because that's where the hotel is at. So that site plan has been approved and adopted and is being constructed via that plan. So, again, the underlying plat won't change the site plan or in any way impact that permitting or any of those pieces.
So is that one plot where the retention area is? Is that pretty much going to be unusable? I mean, it's just going to be retention forever?
Correct. That stormwater drainage facility for the hotel site primarily, and then probably lot 5 will also have some drainage.
And then the access road going to the north, basically, is service for the back of the hotel, probably at the building.
Correct.
And, and whoever owns that parcel, lot 3, so the hotel side has the ownership, will have that, that, the track A is always tied to that via the plat, and the access room via both the plat and an access agreement that's on file is their responsibility to maintain. So, this was one of the things we, we quite honestly thought, so if something happens to that pond, right? It's not being maintained, or it, you know, it clogs up, or whatever. We want to make sure we have a property owner to go to, because as you know, tracks, while there's an owner of a track, they generally by themselves don't have value, because that's generally green space area, things like that. So you may see those under an HOA or some business association, which is great until the HOA or the business association is in play. This way, we set it up to where that hotel site will always be responsible for those two pieces, the road and the detention basin. So if other people build there and that detention basin is decided to be used for other people, that's fine. They still have the responsibility to maintain. So we have somebody from the city to go back to and say, this isn't functioning properly. You have to make these corrections. And that was very intentional.
And the road that goes to the back of the, of the hotel will be paved?
Yes, curved, yes. It'll, it'll be a paved road, but they'll be required to maintain. It'll be a private road, so it will not be a public road. But they'll have to do it to our design standards and specifications for that drive.
Which is paved and curved?
It is hard surface. I'll have to check on the curve. It definitely is hard surface that's required. I believe it's part of the, part of the plans. Yeah, I have to, I have to just go back and look. And I know it is, because the driveway, which has been...
You mentioned something about consideration two?
Yeah, that's the one that we're modifying. So if you look at that currently, item two, just like track A is tied to lot 3, staff initially was looking at track B and saying that should be attached to lot 3 also. When we made that condition, the planning commission and the staff was not aware that there were some financial considerations on the private side that would prevent us tying that additional land to lot 3. So what they're doing instead is where it says lot 3 on the, on condition number two, that would be a 5, basically. So everywhere where it says lot 3 there, we would put 5 instead. That would be the recommendation for that modification. That way, track B, just like track A is being assigned to track, or to lot 3, track B is being assigned to lot 5. So that's in existence that we know who's responsible for the maintenance of that, and it won't get lost in that same scenario that Mr. Webb was talking about.
So the, the billboard owner is not responsible for that property?
I don't know what their private arrangement is, because the billboard ownership is a very small triangular piece of property that's referred to as track C on the plat. On your small version, it's in the middle of the page, if you were to look at just the small little rectangular offset there in the middle. Track C is that triangle that's up at the top. That is a piece of land that is legally defined, that was under previous ownership to those folks. So that's all they're responsible for, is the ownership of that billboard, the maintenance of the property in that triangle area. But I don't know if there's been any kind of private arrangement through the access agreements that says they have to do anything with the road. I'm assuming not. I believe it's all being tied to track A and B as far as the road maintenance is concerned. That track is not owned by Compass. Yeah, it's a separate...
Yeah, that triangle track?
Yeah, it's a separate ownership, and they had to be privy to the signatures on here, so they're actually signing on the plat also.
So, condition or consideration two would be ownership of track B is assigned to lot 5?
Yes.
Just because track A is assigned to...
To lot 3. Easy to follow. And don't ask who got track 1 and 2. They have not been final platted yet, so.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the replat and final plat of 10900, 10820, 10750, Village South Parkway, 2019 dash 06 FPT, with the six conditions and the change in condition two to read ownership of track B should be assigned to lot 5, just as track A has been assigned to lot 3. Maintenance agreement for the rule will be developed and filed prior to and/or with recording of a replat.
Second.
I'm not going to repeat that. But the motion has been made and seconded to approve the planning commission's recommendation regarding replat, final plat for 10900 and 10820, 10750, Village South Parkway. Could the clerk please call?
Malott.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kay.
Kate, next item on the agenda, adhered presentation regarding fourth quarter budget review and fiscal year 2019. Zach, your own, your own.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this will be the fourth quarterly budget review for the 2019 budget. Something we started doing last year and will continue to do in 2020 and moving forward. So essentially, since we've got all four quarters right now, this is going to act as more or less an unaudited budget report for the entire 2019 budget. And it's kind of, I mean, the actual audit will get into more of those nitty gritty details, but this is kind of a broader overview. If you've got specific questions and funds that we're going to go over, feel free to stop me and just let me know. So on property taxes, we collected slightly less than what was anticipated. This is including delinquent taxes as well. Whenever we budget for property tax collection, we always budget at 97% collection rate rather than 100% collection rate. We came in right at that level at the end of 2019. The difference is that delinquent taxes came in at 16,000 less than what was anticipated. So that makes up that difference essentially between what was budgeted and then the actual collection. But still within 1% of our budget estimates in the late summer of 2018.
Before we move past that, just because I think it's like, so when we refer to delinquent taxes from this standpoint, we're really talking about prior year delinquent taxes. So these are not, say they were due in, in 2019 and they didn't get paid, and then they say pay them in July. Those are still considered current tax. They're late in the current, they don't become delinquent until you're dealing prior year. So, sometimes people think that delinquent taxes is what's paid late, and it's not paid late. It has to be for me, prior years, delinquent taxes. And we generally budget, we kind of use 2% of current as the delinquent account. So if you put it all together, you're generally looking at 99%. And that, that, it's been fairly accurate over time. I think some of the work that has been done through the county on the SOAR program, where they put a lot more properties into tax sales, and they've got a lot more properties that they're paying in, could potentially impact that, because they're trying to bring down the number of properties that have delinquent taxes. So in the past, you could go and say you had four years to link, you know, current three years delinquent taxes. So you go pay your tax, and you pay the taxes three years delinquent, and then it took you off the tax sale. Now, when you pay delinquent taxes, it goes to the most current, not to the most, not to the oldest. And that was an intentional thing, because that was kind of what people would do. Like I had this delinquent tax, I got 2,000, I got 6,000 delinquent, I'll just pay 2,000. They apply it to three years old. Now, now I don't meet the statutory requirement for delinquent tax sales. I don't have at least three years delinquent taxes. So there was some changes done a couple of years ago, both policy and maybe in statute, that has allowed them to try to make people be more current. I mean, seems to have been effective, and if you look at their, the number of properties they've taken to tax sales, instead of doing one every couple of years, they did three in the past year. So we may have to watch this, how we budget delinquent taxes, because hopefully currents are going up and the lingers will come down. That's obviously, sorry.
No, no, that's, that's big context. And then, but in the scheme of all that, that's still only, that's a pretty small fraction of the total property tax collection, but just some additional context. In sales taxes, all in all, once they're all told, we're about 3% less than what we had originally budgeted for in, in July and August of 2018. Whenever we presented the sales tax estimates as part of the development of 2020 budget, we were essentially right on, within less than, let me see, .01% of where we, the unaudited total came in. Sales taxes had the biggest, and we brought that up at a couple of the different quarterly budget reviews. Started slower than what we anticipated, because of the dip that 2018 took at the end of the year. And it essentially been, that the city sales taxes have been digging itself out consistently all year. Following pretty predictable trend, but because we started lower than what we were anticipating, it ended up lower than what we had originally budgeted for, but still within 3% of what was originally budgeted a year and a half ago. Franchise fees, we've talked about that too. That's, a lot of this is the, due to the merger of the creation of Evergy. Kind of the silver lining in this, though, is that 2018, when you look at it, was kind of the outlier year in terms of revenue. So this isn't, you know, wholly unprecedented lows by any stretch, when you've taken to the effect the last four years. So it's just kind of the new budgeting reality that we're going to have to take into account as we're moving forward with 2021. Gaming revenue, slightly below budget, but the reason for that is, if you see that bump in 2018, so the distribution we get from the county for gaming revenue is about $35,000, give or take a couple thousand. We got 13 of those in 2018, and we got 11 of those in 2019. So if you move that bump and bump one payment distribution from 18 to 19, it, it's essentially showing that, that 3% growth that we were anticipating, so really not all that concerning there. We would have ended up maybe a little bit below the 420,000 budgeted estimate, but within 5,000 if we would have taken the last distribution from 2018 and moved it over to 2019.
Just out of curiosity, on the gaming revenue, what's the rationale for picking a percentage growth when you're over another? Is it history?
It's history, yeah. I mean, historically, that's, it's between 3 and 4.5%. We always just kind of budget at that 3% because ever since casinos been in place, that's what we've been seeing.
If, if you recall, when the casino first came in, at least the projections, from a trend, it somewhat followed. Is that typically when it came on board, you had a fairly large growth, and then kind of a slow gradual, kind of a dip, and then kind of level out, and then it was a, 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 you know, more leveled growth? I, I, I don't know that they got the spike that they were anticipating. And if we look at it overall, which I, I know we... And if we look at it overall, which I know we had this discussion, it's not producing where, you know, all the great estimates were, which is almost 10 years ago now. I think when it was originally done, they were projecting Edwardsville would get somewhere 550 to 600,000. I think 10 years ago, I told you, we'll be happy if it gets to 400,000. That's kind of where it's been. I mean, I, you know, this council's always been good about not going out and spending projections that are so far out in the future, there's no way to look at it. But I mean, I think it's performing about what was expected.
It's, I mean, we've had enough.
You can't imagine it's going to grow rapidly.
Yeah, we'll have enough, we'll be able to recognize where if a spike started to happen or if there's some outlier in one month of distribution, it's pretty consistent and if the growth rate is pretty consistent on that.
I think it'll be interesting to see if the Hard Rock Hotel and some of the other potential developments in this area, but especially having a, you know, kind of this Class A type hotel facility near the casino will increase these numbers from the standpoint that people can effectively stay and gamble, you know, over a weekend where you have like at the Argosy in the casino on the Kent City area, when they added the hotel there, they obviously saw people come and stay. Now it impacts the hotel for casinos for comping rooms all the time, but it will be interesting to see what, if any, impact it may have on casino revenues overall.
Court fines, so we use a rolling average of the previous four years to get to where our estimated revenues from court fines are going to be. And at least the last two years, they've kind of been outliers in outperforming those budgeted expectations. The 2020 budget doesn't go crazy because we've had a pretty, pretty high return to 2018 and 2019. It kind of keeps that rolling four-year average, but yeah, 32% above where we had anticipated ending up for court fine revenues. That does have some implication on the expenditure side, which we'll get into, just because more activity in the court means more things like more fees to the state, more prisoner booking fees, things like that. So it's not quite a wash, but it's, you know, it does have implications on the spending side. Ambulance fees, we've kind of talked about that too, this kind of showing that downward trend from the high that it was at in 2017. A lot of different factors go into that. Deputy Chief is here if you've got questions about that. But that 162 ending, where we're ending up in the unaudited final, that's pretty close to where we thought we would end up whenever we did our estimates for the 2020 budget. So only off by a couple thousand there. So we think we've got a handle on, on how to estimate that budget going forward. Motor vehicle taxes, not a whole lot to report there, even the fact that it came in about 4% over where we anticipated. General fund revenues, so 20, the orange bar right there is what we originally adopted the budget at. The green bar is where we had made our estimates for the 2020 budget. So this is summer of 2018, this is summer of 2019, and this is unaudited right there. So as you can see, we originally budgeted 5.87 million in revenue. We downgraded that slightly due to the, some of the slow return in sales taxes that we were seeing on the revenue side. At the end of the day though, we're, on the unaudited revenue figures are going to be closer to 6 million. Some of that, that difference is made up in two primary areas. One, in building permits, we budgeted $30,000 in revenue for building permits. That's kind of typically where our wheelhouse is in revenues for that. The building permit related to Village South and the Hard Rock Project came in this year. So that's $56,000 just for that building permit alone. There was also, and Mike might have some more to eat about this, but $50,000 came in from the Village South project that ended up being a transfer back that should have been into the economic development fund. So essentially that was counted in the revenue item. But that kind of makes up where we, that difference for between 5.8 and 5.7. So ended up revenues above projections, which is better than ending up lower than projections. On expenses, 5.8 is where we anticipated being when we adopted the budget. We upped that a little bit to 5.9, ended up a little bit less than what we had anticipated in general fund expenditures as far as our unaudited figures go. So that's a difference of about 50,000. So where we overcollected revenue by about 70,000, we overspent by a little less than 50,000. The difference being, as I mentioned, the two big areas where we overcollected in revenue. The Hard Rock Hotel, we do have, we have the, our contractual relationship with IBTS. So of course, some of our, that permit fee money goes back to IBTS because they're the ones actually doing the plan review, performing the inspections. And as I mentioned, municipal court had that influx in revenue in 2019. We also had an increase in court fees and prisoner booking fees. So that is in a nutshell, the general fund expenditures for 2019. By department, really admin was the, was the biggest, I should say admin and court were the two biggest ones that quote unquote busted their budget for those two areas right there that were essentially offset by revenue items. Fire department came in about 6% under budget. Police department essentially came in right at budget, only continuing it by 0.07%. Public works came in about 5% under budget and parks came in about 13% under budget. So by and large, the departments are being, you know, essentially responsible to the budget that they've withheld to. It's the admin and court where essentially the extra revenues are due to the, or the extra expenditures are because of some of the revenue items. Other funds and expenses, the debt service fund, blue bar is where we budgeted, so summer of 2018. Orange bar is our updated estimate, so summer of 2019. Gray bar is unaudited actual. The biggest difference in the debt service fund is that the money related to the bond issue never actually hit our books. If they would, they would essentially have been an in and out making up that difference. But as stands, that's, that's where the.
The temporary note to convert it.
Correct.
So we budgeted it assuming that those funds would hit and then go back out, but they actually went straight to the trustee, bond trustee. So it just never went through the city boards.
Special sales taxes, we collected additional revenue, again, this is the same blue, summer of 2018, orange is summer of 2019, gray is unaudited final 2019. We collected a little bit of additional revenue unanticipated in, in special sales taxes from the sale of the old fire truck. That was offset by some costs associated with that too. The reason why the final unaudited, the unaudited final in expenditures for special sales taxes coming in less than what we anticipated is largely due to, we only spent $76,000 on the crack seal project versus the $150,000 budgeted. So that, that makes up that difference right there. Special highway fund, the state historically underestimated how much money we were going to get from the special highway fund. They have a KDOT formula that they use to help calculate how much, how much revenue we get from that. And so that's how we come up with that $188,000 figure. And it's been kind of hard, of course, that they undershoot that a little bit and that we ended up at that 210,000. Expenditures came in less than anticipated because the, are we, largely because we reduced the transfer from the special highway fund to the debt fund. We had budgeted 125,000, we only moved over 75,000. And that was due to a couple of different factors, one being the relative strength of the debt service fund and the one to keep this fund as healthy as possible. Economic development fund, the, there was some additional transfer, like I mentioned, a $50,000 transfer from the general fund into the economic development fund. We also had some additional expenditures related to Village South and the Riverview Crossroad project that bumped up the expenditure amount. Back on the revenue side, we also had the origination fee for not NWI, but whatever other IRV projects come in this year rather than what we've been taking from last year.
Now, MWI and FAST and all, I think they both.
I think, yeah. Yeah, so we anticipated only FAST and all, but both NWI and FAST all hit 2018, or should be 2019. Solid waste fund, so we had a little bit of discussion about this when we were talking about our utility rates. The, one of the changes that we made in, for the solid waste fund this year is so we, we had a scheduled transfer from the sewer fund into the solid waste fund. That's largely having to do with late fees. So when we generate late fees, notices that go out to residents, those are paid for out of the solid waste fund. Previously, I think this was just kind of an old practice to help before we were collecting money for the sewer utility to help keep the sewer maintenance fund healthy. We used those late fees and put them in the solid waste fund, but because the sewer fund now has its own revenue source, we use, and the late fees are paid for out of the solid waste fund, we're moving that money back to the solid waste fund, so it's essentially paying for it, where it's coming out of. That's, that's probably the biggest story out of the solid waste fund. We're going to continue to monitor it. We'll probably have an update mid-year to see if we need to consider any other changes to it. And also, you know, we've got the contract, waste management contract coming up that might have some effects on rates in 2021 and going forward.
So there's, back up just a second. If you would. So there's about $10,000 difference between the revenue and the expense?
Uh huh. And what's the? We started, just my note, we started, if you went, if we, if you looked at the audit 2018, we actually finished, that's the one fund we actually had a negative balance. So by looking at current cash balances.
So what would be like a target amount or percentage to have in reserve?
And that's, I mean, that's, you know, ideally, you don't really want to build a, for my part, not too big of a reserve, but there should be a, a large enough revenue to where we're transferring money from solid waste fees into the general fund, which we are not, we used to be doing. We stopped doing that a couple of years ago. And that's to cover some of the administrative costs of doing, that we field calls for and we send out letters for the service. So ideally, you don't want to, there's not really a whole lot of value in building a reserve fund in the solid waste fund because there's nothing for us to maintain.
It's not like a capital fund for sewer improvement or something.
Right, but so, but transferring money for the administration to the general fund helps offset some of that cost associated with road repairs that we've got to do for the trucks, administrative costs, so.
I think you want it probably, I wouldn't want, you're probably in the 10 to 15% range. I mean, and these are, these are all self-supporting, I mean, as a minimum, because this fund, you're still impacted by collections, right? So that whatever 16, 18,000 bill that we get from police management every month, we don't have any option. I mean, we, you know, we have a contract obligation to pay them. And so I think one of the things that Zach's been looking at is how do we somewhat tighten up some of that collection stuff so we're not getting, that, that collection timeframe had to grown to, you know, 16, 18 months in some cases, we put it on the, on the tax roll, you know, maybe 18 months past the delinquency. So, you know, I think to your question, you probably really do want to be, I would say, at least in the 10% range in this fund because that is going to roughly cover a month's worth of operations. You know, if you think about the possibilities that could happen.
So we're fairly close at 5%, I mean, it's not like.
Yeah.
I agree. You don't want too much in there, but you do have to have enough to.
Right.
To absorb some like late penalties.
Yeah.
Some failure timing or something.
Your sewer, and if you had water, but your sewer fund, you want more because the, the prop, you know, the possibility or probability of a significant event happening, right? So I mean, the thing that would impact solid waste would either be one, collection, or two, if you had some kind of a natural event that impacted garbage collections, either one, you know, let's just say you had a storm and you had to have a lot of pickup and you're, you're going to the, to the garbage company and saying, we've got all this brush, down debris, whatever, we need to pick this all up. You're probably not going to go back to the customer for those kinds of collections. But also in the interim, you might not have any collections of regular garbage or difficulties, right? So probably a natural disaster or lack of payment is the two things that impacts solid waste, which is why I say, I think that, you know, in that 10 to 15% range is probably reasonable. Where if I'm looking at the wastewater fund, you certainly want 15 or plus. Same with your, you know, generally your general fund because for the same very reasons, it's generally what impacts a city is some major event hits and your property tax, you know, your property taxes, your sales taxes quit flowing, right? I mean, you know, a tornado hits and hits your retail district and all of a sudden, you're not generating any retail sales. What happens? You're still going to provide police and fire and most of the time you got to provide more of it, not less of it, you know, it's time. So I don't know, I may have overstated, but this one, I, I would say you could probably be a little less in this one than probably some of your other self-supporting.
There's really no capital advantage.
Shouldn't be, I mean, if we owned the, you know, if we were running the trucks and they were our trucks, I mean, I'd have a different business, but yeah, in this case, it's really about collections.
Which is a good segue into the sewer fund. On the collection side, we came in $676,000 above where we had kind of were so anticipated being at the earlier part of last summer. The reason expenses came in so low, I shouldn't say so low, but lower than anticipated, largely due to the fact that the treatment contracts, we had budgeted about 350,000, only came in about 320,000, which is kind of right in line with the, with the data that we're seeing running through the flow meters. So that gives it, our estimates are essentially correct for that. We budgeted at the height of it. And then service contracts for repairs, kind of park some money in there in some of the instances that Mike can talk about in case there is some kind of large scale maintenance problem. Anticipated, not anticipated, but budgeted for $60,000, you know, major fit, it came in about $11,000 as far as maintenance and repairs go. So that, those are the two big.
So my question on this one would be, we're maybe looking at something much more than 15% on this. Wouldn't wait to build up the funds for, because we talked about this a few years ago, is we need to build some cushion in our capital fund.
Yeah, and then the sewer fund, remember, we didn't, we didn't really have any, we didn't, I mean, we're still somewhat, have very little history here. We know there was little, no maintenance in the past other than the lift stations. So some of those things we're starting to do now. For example, you know, we still have to go out and map our entire system. I mean, we did a very simple map, but I mean, we need to go in literally, yes, the entire system, you know, that's a $100,000 kind of project and, you know, potentially debt servicing. And we do pay, you know, one of the things we did make sure in the budget is we now, and it really hit in the 2020 and 2021 budgets, I mean, we budgeted for them. We will be paying off old, old debt and then, but we're only paying 50% of the old debt, sewer debt. And the policy is all sewer debt that we paid for by the sewer system. When we issued new debt for the 1.2 million related to the LTC, those payments will 100% come from the sewer fund. We haven't had that in the past. So building and reserve here is important. And some of it's just, we're still kind of spinning up, right? I mean, we, and we probably did this year, we are intending to buy, you know, we don't have just a service, you know, the service vehicle for the, for the maintenance work, right? You know, the pickup truck, you know, the basic stuff. We have probably a number of tools and things that we, you know, the other day we had to vacuum down all our lift stations for, you know, that was four hours of time from, you know, third party. Things that haven't been done in years and we're starting to step it up. But yeah, I would say you, you can always have too much money, but I mean, if you had 20% in this fund, I don't think you would be out of the wallet either. 15 to 18 would be, I'd put this fund and the general fund about in the same place.
We'll probably end up about $300,000 in this fund.
Yeah.
Let's all set it for the end of 2019.
But some of that going to go out pretty quick.
Right, 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 right. So that's the kind of the broad overview of the 2019 budget. We're standing now again, all unaudited. We should be here in the audit as normally scheduled toward the end of May, beginning of summer. If you have any specific questions, let me know if you have anything else. If you agree, shoot me an email or if we need to put some out on the, on the public side so folks can take a look. This will all be posted, but yeah, if you've got questions, okay.
I have one question and it's just about the prisoner booking fees. I'm guessing that's through the Whitehead County jail system. Do we get charged the same fees that like Kansas, Kansas.
It's $90 a day.
No matter where they come from?
Yeah, it's about averages, just a little over two and a half people, if you will, mathematically, every day.
Okay.
But I understand that we, so for them to get billed to us, so. But, but I understand that we, so for them to get billed to us, so the police department may arrest somebody and take them up there, but unless it's on our, our warrant from our court, it doesn't necessarily, so if they arrest somebody and they're on a Kansas City, Kansas warrant, but we just, we happen to be the ones that arrest them and they go in jail because they got Kansas City, Kansas warrant, we don't pay those booking fees. So these are warrants that are rest that are, that we direct it out of our court.
And sentencing.
Right. And so that's generally.
Our bookings are in six hours or less. So every time they go there, so then, then there may be a five days on the court, that's part of what you're doing. But your average is about, about two and a half people every day.
It's definitely gone up. We, we were in the 30s, 40s, 50s, I mean, we, we watched pretty close, but as court activities got higher, police activity took some, you know, not much.
But when Kansas City, Kansas and Bonners Springs take people, they're charged the same per day per person?
Yeah, that's, municipal booking fee charged by the county is the same fee for everyone.
All right. Okay, there are no further questions. Thank you, Zach. Mike, your own word.
Well, and, and I know Mr. Bodie's left. You know, I, in this budget report, it might have been good to hear, I mean, you know, I, I think we continue to, there's difference between mill levy, which we heard a lot of information about mill levy, and tax burden, and they're, they're not necessarily the same. And I know we've had discussions about this. You know, I would simply say, I don't know if any, I, I can't pick for any of those other entities or any of those other places. I know that this council has held the line or awarded its taxes every year for, we know the last three, but before that, we held the taxes for a number of years on top of that. So I don't, you know, I, I just want to say, I know you know this, I mean, staff takes it seriously, right? We, we understand that that's an issue that has to be, you know, addressed out there. And we continue to bring you budgets that we think are fiscally appropriate, you know, and take into consideration the burden on the taxpayer because it is their money. I mean, it's all of our money wherever we're at, it is our burden, but we're also asked to provide services at certain levels and you have to figure out which, you know, which side of the coin you want to be on. The Chamber, and Zach probably hit on this, you, but I mean, has some other, the Chamber annual meal dinner is on the Friday, February 28th. I don't know if we've gotten a count of council members and you and spouses that, that wish to attend. We sponsor it. There are a number of other sponsors that, that are sponsoring full tables that, that may not have all the people there. So we just need to kind of get a count of who from council anticipates coming in need, need to have some people may have, they may have somebody else, a spouse or somebody that works for, somebody that's already doing a sponsorship, that's fine as well. We just need to know if you're going to come and, and bring a spouse or a guest, then we can make sure we have table arrangements for everybody. So we hope we do make it. Monday is President's Day, so City Hall is technically closed, so I doubt anybody will probably be here, so the doors won't be open for the citizens. I know you have a few other things, so I would.
Just to update the council, when we did board reappointments a couple, a couple meetings ago, we noted that there are going to be some changes to the, we're proposing some changes, I should say, to the cemetery and park board makeup. We've kind of introduced those changes to the presidents and the ex officio representatives for those boards. We'll be kind of rolling it out to the larger membership of those groups later on this week. And if, you know, by all accounts, everybody seems to be on board with what we've been, some of the concepts we've been proposing. So we should have some activity for the council to act on at heart next meeting at the end of February.
Thank you, Zach. Chief Mathies.
I think, Diane, we'll have a, next time we meet, we'll have a full update on our K-9 program, it's progressing. The next thing we'll have is an update as well as, should have a graduation from the academy on 14th, but we'll let you know when we come back next time. We'll wait till then. And our crime rate, this is the time of year we get all that data, and I know there's an upcoming report, but our crime rate really represents our uniform crime reports where our more serious violations, all the way from motor vehicle theft to homicide, you get everything in between, mainly felonies, not things typically at the local level. And we've seen an increase there. We moved from about 30 per 1,000, about 32.5 per 1,000, somewhere in there, that range. And we had our second most busiest year, only second to 2018, which is historically the busiest year we've ever had. And so that, the trend, so we had all these statistics in 2018, but what you notice is the crime index rate was lower because we had more of the misdemeanor type crimes, lower crimes, if you will, rather than these more serious crimes. And then now we're seeing the trend where we're staying heavy on those lower ones as well, but we're seeing more of the more serious crimes. So that's been a trend that's varies, you know, throughout the years, we've seen that. And we're about to where we were just a few years ago, we kind of made that move up, but that's trending with the county and some over the state as well. So that's kind of somewhat we'll see in the report that's coming up, probably in the next couple of, couple of meetings.
Thank you. Chief Whip.
It's that time of year again for grants, we started the process with the firehouse subs grant.
The Good Sandwich.
The Good Sandwich, also with forestry 50% reduction grant, or 50, 50, 50 action grant. And then we are also in the window for the assistance to firefighter grants, the big little try. I'm not very confident because I took 1.2 million of their dollars and another one, but we're going to give it the dog college try, going to go from there. But also, we've had posting outs. I think we're getting ready to move, bring in three to interview for the open firefighter firefighting position that we have on A ship right now. Other than that, we'll be launching the new, starting the new RMS, and we will be reaching out to the business owners starting April, start inspections for a little bit later this year, who are trying to get everything established on the front end, so we'll have to do inspections on the back end, sorry, pre-laden, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'll just touch on the EMS building. We're taking a ground up approach to looking at how we're doing the EMS building and we'll be able to raise the recovery rates for that.
Thank you. Mike, have you got any comments for Public Works?
Well, I would just say that.
Since you're the director now.
Yeah, I have to remember that. Nothing too major, I mean, as far as projects, the, at the last meeting, remember, we authorized for the right of way acquisition process, so I expect that will be going on fairly quickly as far as the letter, the necessary letters that go out and the meetings with the property owners with the appraiser if they choose to. So that piece will be going on. We'll also be doing, it's a little bit different process thing, on Fourth Street with the railroad, we just need temporary construction actions, there's no, there's really no acquisition in any of that, so there's no acquisition dollars. Those will be probably going out as well. So I know sometimes when that stuff goes out, that, you know, people start calling and asking, so those two projects will be happening. Public Works has been doing some parks maintenance things here in the wintertime, so helping getting some of the parks prepared. We're going to be doing some, you know, working on some road patching types of projects, a couple of things that we can do to try to address some, just problem areas. I, I think they won't be permanent fixes, but, but, you know, we can try to patch some things that we can, so. One thing I wanted to note that I forgot to, just on the side, we will have Greg Kimball with Wyandotte EDC will be here at the next meeting to give you a overview report of what's going on with the county, the corporation.
And Commissioner Walters.
And Commissioner Walters, definitely back to you.
I'll, I'll say it now, so I won't repeat it.
Yes, okay. So, so one of those two presidents, hey, we were trying to offset him, but schedules just didn't work out quite the way that we hoped, but he will be here on that. Otherwise, I think Public Works is doing well. We, we starting the review of applicants that we have today, where we have some very good applicants in that mix that have experience in public work, in this public works, and so we'll start that, that process. We are still posting it and, you know, you never know, you go through the process and you have good applicants and then you get through interviews and you're still just not quite there, so we're not going to stop that part, but we will probably be doing that in the next two weeks, maybe first round interviews. That's Public Works.
Do you say anything? Hey, Chuck, we're going to start with you.
The cemetery and, and the.
Arch.
Board combination consideration, after seeing through the media a couple of weeks ago, it really became crystal clear that, that the synergy that's going to happen, that can happen with that, and the reception from the presidents of both the boards was really very positive and I think it's going to work out really well for the city and for the boards and create some excitement and some, some more activity or more board input and interaction, and that's looking forward to that. And so, and, and in response to, to Mr. Bodie's question, I'm going to speak for myself and say, yes, I, I am concerned about tax increases, but as a representative of the city, I'm even more concerned about the safety and well-being and quality of life in Edwardsville. So it's a balance of doing both of those, and we work very hard not to, to spend excessively. I think if, if we do, if we spend excessively, it's on the quality of life in town and not ancillary issues that really don't make a difference in everybody's lives, so. And then, do you count soon I am on the February 2?
Carol?
Are we waiting on the Public Works part-time employee that's dealt with the cemetery and parks until after the director's hired?
That was, the plan is, so what we've done is, so our, our one employee that has effectively left to go to nursing school, and we kept him on part-time, so he is working in that part-time role, which isn't really budgeted. And so the intent was, we hired a new Public Works person, get the Public Works director on and then fill that full-time, but in the interim, we have a person who can work part-time, 20 to 30 hours a week, which will help us address some of the early cemetery types of issues as far as the maintenance and those types of things, so.
And I've noticed a lot, not to jump on Chuck Stice's bandwagon, but so he's not here, just litter all over the sides of the roads. I, I've picked up some on my own before, but even outside of my own neighborhood, it's a growing problem. And so I was just hoping, I know that person's going to have a heavy load already, but if there's any downtime, I know some of our neighboring cities will, if the UG employees aren't, aren't busy, they'll something go park somewhere, stop burning gas, you know, that would be a great time filler, should, should there be any, any time available.
And the way this weather's been, this, this weather's challenging because it's just about the time we want to take all the, the salt stuff off the trucks, then we have to put them back on, you know, and put the plow, not, not that it can't be done, but it's kind of one of those, okay, we need to go get a, you know, load of, of patch material. So you got to take everything off the truck, then you drive over to where the bulk materials is at, which is over almost the world's a fun, and then you got to drive back and then, you know, then oops, we're going to have snow tomorrow, and you put everything back on. I mean, he goes with the business, but it's a common. Is there any, I mean, I mean, I noticed it just driving down K-32, the amount, it was just kind of stuck up with trees. I mean, I, I'm sure you could drive any, lots of places and see it, but if there's areas where you see that it is, you know, maybe above normal, I mean, I, I don't know how to define that.
I've noticed it off of like Kansas and 98th Street, Kansas 907, Riverview and 110. It looks honestly what it looks like is people on their way, they'll just throw stuff out the window as they come home, and, you know, so I, I.
Kind of the Kansas Avenue corridor.
Yeah, and Riverview.
And I think, you know, the, the River, River.
And I'm sure there are more places in the city that have issues, but I'm going to sit there and apply, yeah.
Mainly, I'm going to say it follows traffic.
Yeah.
So if we follow where the high traffic flows are, you probably can see a higher level of traffic, okay? Just didn't know if there was some area that just like somebody just maybe.
I haven't seen like any like illegal dump sites if, you know, no one just unloaded a whole truckload.
We'll talk about that. We have a meeting in the morning about maybe taking a day, maybe breaking up into a couple of two-person groups and see if we can just get out. Nothing else, get some of the intersection areas, probably get off the road and spend a little time.
And I don't even mind helping, if I'm available, sending an email, hopefully bring my little pinchers and get out there. Um, that is, I'll announce something for talking about. That's it.
Okay, here.
I don't, I don't have any comments.
Perfect.
I just have a few. Zach, once again, thank you. The quarterly budget reports, those are extremely helpful, but it's, it's nice getting that in the quarter chunks because it, it just helps it make a lot better sense, so. And Chief, I'm interested to hear about your department, what these trends are, it's a little disturbing, crimes going up.
Certainly a lot of work.
Right, right.
You know, when you get into, you know, some of these social crimes like the drugs and that, that FED stuff, those are people doing five days in jail and that kind of thing.
I just wonder, as a community, what, if there's anything, God forbid everybody's loaded, anything we can do, I see it on the news all the time, these neighborhoods or communities trying to, trying to do something, but, so maybe with your presentation scene, what, what, what are these trends happening? I don't know, maybe, I don't know, there's got to be some resources we could reach out to, but I know that sounds easy, but it's disturbing to hear that.
Typically, over the years, what we have seen as Wyandotte County goes, and Wyandotte County goes with kind of a region, if you will, like KC Mo, more, more crime than more crime, it all kind of just flows and kind of overflows, if you will, we see those trends. Therefore, Kansas was trending down for the first time in a couple of, well, lots of years, actually, Segway County, Wichita area surged above KCK in Wyandotte County in the crime rate last year, which was somewhat surprising. So you're seeing a trend where they had difficulties in the early 80s, 90s, not to digress too far, but Wichita had these troubles and they were really high. Then they figured out, well, they can do these things and it was working, and now you see those things not working anymore. And so we kind of have to retool. For us, it's really very transient. Most people we arrest don't live in Edwardsville, they're not a resident of this community. And if they are, they're very short-term. So in other words, they've only been here a couple of months, that's, we see that kind of a trend. So it's hard that we have some sort of violation that happens here, but they're from KCK, KC Mo, you know, it's just from all over, and, and so it's, so what you've got to figure out, and we have a lot of drug-driven crimes, the, all the mail thefts and all the package stuff, as a result, what are they doing with that? They're trying to find checks and cards and things to generate revenue, what are they going to do with that because it's drugs-related? What we've seen on, we know the famous street, 98th North, that north end up there, you know, that is all drug-driven, all of it. You've stolen cars, guns, people, shootouts, all that kind of stuff, robberies, all that stuff has been drug-related. So what we did in that situation and others as well is you put all your resources the best you can and just put some pressure on to somewhat disperse people if you can and or address as many as you can. Sometimes it's all you can do is saturation because it's isolated, right? How many more times have we, we've been one address on 98th Street, a thousand times more than we have anywhere else, right? So, but that's somewhat Edwardsville, so it becomes complex for the staff to say, okay, we're going to target zone three. Well, why? You know, it's the least amount cars, least amount houses, right? Because they're large lots, zone three is up north, right? Be east of 102nd, right? So, so, okay, but that's, there's something happening, well, that's one or two people. But what we've learned over the years, and we've learned this academically, that 6% of the people commit 60% of your crimes. That's who we go after, we find those people. And we have programs in place today that help us identify who they are and then we put the pressure on for all lawful stuff. But remember, 6% of the people are committing 60, 60% of your crimes in traditional communities. But you've got to ask yourself sometimes, what's traditional about Edwardsville? It's unique in so many ways. Where's your downtown normal, you have that kind of downtown group, community piece, we don't have that. We have a, if you live here, you more than likely do not work here. If you work here, you more than likely don't, do not live here. It's very unique. So we face challenges of all this transient environment every day. So we face challenges of all this transient environment every day, and we try to do it, again, with sometimes the least amount of staff, and a number like eighty-some thousand for booking fees, number one, that's a red flag to me, because we've had some accounting errors from downtown, but at the same time, you know, is there maybe ways we can control that by booking less people? Well, that doesn't make sense, sometimes, sometimes giving someone a ticket is a choice, but it's not the solution that we may need in our community. Do we want that person who did all this harm to other folks to just be released back to the house right next to you or something like that? So sometimes we have to make discretionary decisions to book people in jail, and quite frankly, in some cases, domestics, which are always on the rise, is something critical for us, we have to book them, we're going to take them to jail, they're going to get these no-contact orders and stuff, and that's part of our numbers, and we've seen increases in that area as well, it's, it's been something that's always been a high category, high statistic in this community, but how do you solve it? It's such a personal thing, there's not a patrol car just driving by looking for a domestic to happen, it's a call for service, right, it's violent and ongoing, so how do you slow that down? And that may be social, economical type things that we can't really control, so.
When I think, maybe when we do that report, and we get together, you know, maybe we go to a little more depth on some of those trends by maybe types of crimes, right, so the, the property crime versus personal crimes, or, you know, what have we seen, maybe how, maybe some of our comparisons to regional comparisons might be helpful, just to see, you know, what those things are, I mean, we may, you know, you may have Kansas City, Missouri, you know, maybe they're having a big spike in homicides, that's, and that's not necessarily our critical area, I'd say we can't have one, maybe our critical area is in, you know, drugs or property crimes, or, you know, other serious crimes, and so, you know, I know that we focus our resource there, just to give you all a better idea of, when we say, that's the problem with the crime index, you know, it's thirty-two per thousand, and you go to, you know, Johnson County, oftentimes, it's, you know, it's half that number, but then if you start looking at it statewide, it's, you know, maybe fairly low, and if you look at it in Wyandotte County, you know, of the three cities, we may be the lowest, but that, that doesn't necessarily always give you a great indicator of what day-to-day the men and women of the police department have to deal with it. And honestly, that goes right over to, oftentimes, to the fire department when you got the drug, you know, you're dealing with the drug crimes and the drug overdoses, it's beaten over that side too, so. We can try and look at, you know, maybe a little more than we typically do, and maybe get down a little bit of that trend without worrying anybody to death on every single number, but.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to echo too about Councilman Adams' comments about taxes, we're as proud to say we've sat here in Mueller, Texas, last three, four, or five years on the pressure, but the setup here with the Wyandotte County, we're likely North City.
Right.
And I do not mind as a city, what is a few of the larger items that we spend our tax dollars on? What are those?
Oh, yeah, police, fire, I mean...
Thank you.
I mean, we have a six million dollar budget...
Thank you, that's all I wanted to hear.
And you're four, I mean, four, four and a half million of that is police, fire amounts, absolutely.
That came beautifully right after your report, so money very well spent.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I thought of something afterward, I just wanted to mention, because I think it's really confusing to a lot of folks who come during the public comments, and they ask, ask questions, and we just like stare at them, and it seems cold, and I just wanted to clarify, especially for, because we have some folks that watch at home, that it's not that we don't care, and it's not that we don't want to respond, but it's unfair for us to publish an agenda that we distribute to the community and then get into a whole other topics that we haven't even said we would be discussing that evening, and so it's not that we don't care, and it's not that we don't necessarily want to respond, but for transparency's sake, because our city and our council very much care about being upfront in what we're discussing at our meetings, we can't just get into every topic that's addressed that night, and many times you'll hear councilmen address those topics later, as some of ours did tonight, in their personal comments, but I just wanted to clarify that, that it's, it's not that we don't care, but we do care about transparency, and so we can't veer too much off of our...
I think you said it very well, I mean, that, that is the challenge, is you then don't give everybody the opportunity to be a part of the discussion, and the discussion starts in one place, and I think that we did it, we started it, we may have dropped off of it, we may want to reiterate, I know that the mayor, and I think we gave some language about reminding people when we get to the public comment period, and...
It's not open discussion.
That the purpose of it is to gather information and not to have, you know, it's not a time of, of some discussions or decision-making, it very well may be something that you as a council say, hey, can you place that on the next agenda for a fuller debate? If that's the case on a night, we certainly will always do that, so.
Mark, it's been several times you've made yourself available to...
Sure.
Citizens that have come up to meet with them, which is probably better.
I mean, I'm always happy, I mean, that's why we're here, I'm always happy to meet with them at some other time. Mary, and you may going to be, address this, I didn't hear before, but I would just note that Senator Braun was here this week...
Yeah, I was going to make, are we going to make a comment?
I'll let you handle it.
Harris want to make a comment?
I was going to mention that, but if that's along the lines of communications, these, these guys up here are much more eloquent at speaking than I am, you know, I'm just kind of say what I'm thinking at the time, but I think communication sometime is an issue with the constituents out there. We have public hearings on budget every year, I've been involved in this a long time, and that's one of the least attended meetings we ever had, or we ever have, nobody's ever here, you know, complaining, saying something about you're raising taxes, you're doing this, and we're not doing that, you know, we're, we're somebody else's stepchild, and we have to go along with what they tell us to do. We do a good job maintaining what we need down there, plus the public services that we provide for people down here, and I kind of take it defensively when people say, you're not doing what you're elected to do, like, well, sometimes the constituents aren't doing what they're responsible to do as citizens, you know, if they, they can run for office, they can come to the meetings and voice their concerns, or they can kind of live with what they get, you know, you can talk to people out on the street and explain to them that it's not us that's doing this, it's coming from here, we have no control over this, and sometimes you're just speaking to a wall, and that's bouncing back to you, so it's sometimes I take offense to those kind of things. Carolyn and I were talking the other day after Braun was here about the communication issue, and I have suggested in the last several years, why don't we have some kind of a sign board around here that could make public announcements, public service announcements, an electronic sign like they got up at Bonner Springs or something, maybe something around the post office where there's traffic generated, you could say, you're having a PTO meeting at the school, you're having a budget hearing at the city council, you know, come down and voice your concerns, the Braun, Braun is here for a public hearing, you know, a public forum, I mean, I think communication might be some of the problem, the hot shop is trying very well, but I don't know what the readership is on that, and, you know, if you have, if you, since the Bonner Springs chieftain isn't here anymore, we don't even barely have an official newspaper, the Wyandotte County Echo, now who knows what the Wyandotte County Echo does, and who's ever read?
The Striver does.
It's not, and if I'm saying something to the end of my...
It is a legal public...
I've been here, I've been here forever, and we had the chief, and we had a representative from the chieftain here at every single meeting, and he would, whether it was one paragraph or if it was a half a page, he always said, the report of that council meeting's in there, and that's what we need, and I'm sorry, you know, like I say, I run my mouth, and I'm not very eloquent sometimes, but I think that we need to research some kind of a way of communicating this out to the public.
A lot of community newspapers has impacted cities across the nation exactly the same kind of deals, and community newspapers aren't, I mean, they're no part of the solution, because they're not going to come back.
That's why I come out here.
And I think a lot of people, I mean, I can tell you in our profession, I'm betting all, all there, that probably everything we ever go to, there's some discussion around this very topic in a professional, like, well, how do we communicate this, how do we get this stuff out? Things happen rapidly, and the level of sophistication around the issues we deal with are, have rapidly increased as well, right? I mean, just even the budget process, and all the pieces that go with it, are much more sophisticated, the types of equipment we have to buy, the cost, you know, so when people think about, oh, you're going to buy cars, we think far more about us going buying our personal cars, and don't realize that inside that police car, we probably, we probably have as much in equipment in the car as the car itself is worth. I mean, the cost isn't the car, it's everything that goes with it, that you need to have, and, you know, you know, a radio is, you know, what, three to five thousand dollars for a radio anymore? And you got one in the car, and you got one in your belt.
And I think that we've got pretty good equipment, you know, I've been with Chief Mathies and Chief Whitman, and I know that, that we've got pretty good equipment, you know, some of the stuff is always state-of-the-art, that some other people don't even have, and I'm interested in that, but I'm still interested in this, communicating somehow or other with the public that isn't here, that should be here.
Okay, Mark?
I have thirty seconds.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, and I apologize, if I offend anybody, I apologize, that's what I...
You're leaving in to my time. I think all of, I know me personally, I think all of us would be really, really open to communication, we, you know, you can go to the website, and you can hit our email address, and you can send us a message, and people like that presented themselves this evening, we've met with, we have met one-on-one, we've talked with them, and, and we do make an effort, and I'm personally willing to entertain any kind of communication that any citizens would have, so.
Okay, your time, then. I will make my comments after I congratulate Chief Whitman and, and your Sergeant Johnson for the awards given to them by Senator Braun, that was, that was very nice, appreciate, appreciate you, both of you's work on cram the truck, cram the cruiser, that is much appreciated, and I'm sure the community does too. This is the end of it, okay? Everybody sitting up here pays taxes, I don't get a break on my taxes. My house went up the same rate that his went up, I don't ever complain about my taxes, never, never have, never will, but everybody sitting up here pays taxes, we don't get a break. And my experience with, with Mr. Bodie is, he doesn't want to hear anything, he just wants to stay. I won't say any more, I shouldn't have said that, but anyway, with that, your turn.